Our dear Father in Heaven, we are gathered together this first Monday evening in January as a city council, and we give thee gratitude for the privilege that we have to do that. And we are grateful for the Christmas season that we have celebrated to honor thy Son, the Savior. And we wish to always honor each other as he has with love and kindness. We ask special guidance and inspiration to be with each councilman and councilwoman and the mayor as they ponder the issues that are before the city and know that they strive to pass the ordinances or whatever is needed to serve the people of their jurisdictions. And please guide them as to the best choices to make. We love thee and give thee gratitude for all the blessings. And dear Father in Heaven, please bless the citizens of Independence that they'll get vaccinated so that we can overcome this pandemic and be about normalcy in our lives once more. We pray for those who are, have the COVID and the Omicron, that they may get the care and medications that they need to recover. And we pray for our medical people and hospitals that are in overwhelm. We love thee and give thee gratitude for all that we have in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Councilmembers Huff.
Here.
Perkins.
Here.
Stewart.
Here.
DeLucy.
Here.
Steinmeier.
Here.
Hobart.
Here.
Mayor Weir.
Here.
That brings us to the citizens' request. We have a couple citizens that would like to speak. We have one speaking virtually, Mr. Baird.
Yes, Councilmember Huff, can you hear me all right, sir?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me all right?
A little louder would be nice for me.
All right. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I am Kevin Baird, a resident of the 3rd District. My comments, thoughts, and opinions tonight are my own and do not reflect those of my employer, family, or friends. In the spirit of New Year's, I thought I'd speak to you tonight to share some of the goals and resolutions this resident would like to see come out of the council in 2022 and beyond. To begin, let's pass a new resolution recommitting our desire to become one of the greenest cities in America. We can reinforce that by committing IPL to becoming a carbon-neutral utility by 2035. This will require renegotiating existing coal contracts, but with those utilities also moving toward a carbon-neutral future, we should be able to find a reasonable arrangement. This should also make your decision on potential replacement generation easier by eliminating fossil-fuel-based sources from the mix-up for consideration. Next, let's direct city staff to take all necessary steps to prohibit new natural gas hookups for single- and multifamily residential new construction by the end of this year. This gets us further down the road to our greener future while also having the convenient side effect of boosting electricity demand for our community-owned utility, which in turn could help lead to lower rates for all customers. We should also look to find ways to incentivize green builders that follow LEED standards and other green-building codes while thinking creatively on how we can incentivize green building standards for affordable housing, similar to what Kansas State University has done with their $100,000 carbon-neutral concept home. In short, new construction in the city should be future-proofed. Carbon-neutral should be our target with extra incentives for those that could build to put excess electricity onto the grid, all things that can work to our advantage as owners of this utility. That being said, from my vantage point, we're looking at a potential eight-to-nine-figure investment in IPL this decade. We, as a community, need to have a serious discussion about whether that makes sense for our long-term plans. If it does make sense, the discussion becomes even more serious because we're going to need to figure out how to pay for it. Not only that, we're going to need to ensure we're paying a fair price and things are being executed to the degree promised. The track record of oversight and return on investment at this utility is almost nil, with tens of thousands of dollars paid to consultants for advice that is only ignored, along with plenty of scandal to boot. So for this level of community investment to occur, a complete restructuring of the oversight of IPL would be needed, as well as amendments to the charter to ensure the public, who are on the hook to fund these investments, get a fair return on their money. Whether that's spillover funding to the general fund or something in addition to the pilot's program, the community should insist on more of a return from these kind of endeavors. A vote-vying, charter-breaking, one-time rebate is the type of short-sighted return we should be looking to avoid in the future. That $11-plus million giveaway did nothing to reduce your rates or improve your liability on our electric system. They gave that money away only to come back a few short months later henny at asking for 10 times as much from you. Happy New Year. I would encourage this council to look to other cities with community-owned utilities for oversight guidance. The city of Chattanooga, Tennessee, and Austin, Texas are two examples that come to mind. Changing gears, let's enact a common-sense ordinance to require guns be locked up in residences when not in use by the owner. Safe storage of firearms should be something we can all agree on, particularly when children are or can be present in the home. We as a community owe it to ourselves to avoid unneeded tragedies like we've witnessed here and around the country. Next, let's stop being Team COVID and start being Team Reality. Virus enablers can do their best to remove mask and emergency orders, but we need brave leaders that will stand up to the madness of the crowd and listen to our medical professionals.
You have one minute.
Finally, this council needs to pass a resolution directing the city manager to produce a full report of what is known about the December 2020 ransomware attack and what steps have been implemented to protect data and prevent recurrences in the future. It's unacceptable how something so impactful to the city has been allowed to be brushed under the rug like it has. We need to know what happened and what's being done to prevent it in the future. The seriousness of this is amplified by our ownership of an electric utility. It requires a full public accounting of what happened because I can tell you from firsthand experience that this is the kind of stuff that keeps utility executives awake at night. The silence from our city about this event does not exhibit confidence from this residence. Please change that. Thank you for your time and Happy New Year.
Thank you. That brings us to Mr. Ken Love, like to speak to the council on Emmett Domain this evening.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, city council, city manager, and the residents that are here tonight. Over the holidays, I had a phone call asking if I was busy or not. I wasn't too busy, enjoying sitting at home. He said, "That's good. These are special instructions. I will be known as the whistleblower. Could you please drive your duly Ford pickup to the Kmart location at Nolan and I-70? When you arrive at this location, you must have your phone turned off. I will know when you are there, and you will know when I'm there." Few minutes later, a vehicle comes up, gets out, and introduces himself as the whistleblower, which he knew I was Kenneth Love. Whistleblower got a few questions. "Why do you call me?" He says, "Well, you're a candidate for mayor, and I would like to advise you of what's going on with the City of Independence city manager, the City of Independence's mayor, a City Independence resident, and the ex-city manager of Kansas City, Missouri." They are wanting this property to allocate to two types of businesses under one investor. First off, it was spoken of a nice, big apartment complex for low-income families. Okay, I understand that because a few years before that, I actually met with a gentleman over taking over that property at one time, or buying that property, may I say, to actually put low-income housing there. I also spoke to a different guy at the time that was running for councilman back then, and he said he understood, but he would vote no if he was on the council. And that's nobody that's here today. Moving forward, there was this investor also stated to the people involved in his, "Well, let's invent and rebuild small shops, and then we will give the individuals the opportunity to become an owner." In other words, just say they build this big building, this shop, this shop, this shop, how many ever shops there is, and I am not calling any council members out, but let's just say Councilman DeLucy wants to invest a million dollars and buy a portion since she's got deep pockets. And so that would make you an owner of the strip mall. And the residents of Independence that was there with these other people said, "No, but hell no," and walked off. Emmett Domain, City of Independence, I think I'm going to go into a new business starting tonight. All last week after I met with the whistleblower, I went to 3,600 Blue Ridge Boulevard. I banged on the door, left notes on the door. Still to today, I have not received a phone call or any interest to sell or not sell.
You have one minute.
So I'm asking you tonight, city council.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
I'm going to ask for you to stop this. That's my personal home address, which I know people are aware of.
Madam, Madam Mayor, please.
So I would ask you to stop this speaker.
Good. You have to resign from speaking like that.
You asked, okay, I won't speak like that anymore. Anyway, what I'm asking for y'all to do, I'm very interested in this property on Blue Ridge and to help start Emmett Domain. I think it's a perfect location to make an L-shaped 12-plex out of with a swimming pool. Low-income housing. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll bring us to our presentations, the resolution. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-700, a resolution recognizing Peggy Thurmond, account information representative with the Water Department, as the employee of the month for January 2022.
Need a motion.
So move.
Second.
Need a motion and second it. Please call roll.
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes.
That brings us to our consent agenda.
She's not here.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve. Sorry. I knew that word. I did. Reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council person that would like to pull something for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
Item three.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
Can you pull item number two?
What number was that?
I think he said two.
Two.
Okay. Madam City Clerk, will you please call roll for all the recommendations and reports here other than two and three?
Councilmembers Huff.
Yes.
Perkins.
Yes.
Stewart.
Yes.
DeLucy.
Yes.
Steinmeier.
Yes.
Hobart.
Yes.
Mayor Weir.
Yes.
That approved. Councilman DeLucy.
Thank you. Item number three is for the $2.2 million in improving streets and sidewalks and things of that nature. Unfortunately, it includes our avoiding the obligation of a management analyst to make sure everything looks good. The charter says we shall have a management analyst. The management analyst has specific duties under the policy, and this ignores it, and therefore I am not in favor of it. And if that means we delay doing something, then that's what we have to do. That's all I have to say.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
If I might ask the city manager a question.
Sure.
What's the, is this a deal where we're getting federal money and our own money? What's the breakdown?
I need to double-check with, I'll have Adam Norris come up as assistant city manager and give you the cost allocation. Eighty-twenty, eighty-twenty. It's like the price is right here. Eighty-twenty. Eighty percent federal, twenty percent city funds. So we have applied for, in the competitive grant cycle, there's a tranche of federal funds that comes each year for what we call Surface Transportation Program. We competed in that cycle for the Kansas City metro area, and this was one of the projects that's been awarded. Unfortunately, it does come with a shot clock. It's use it or lose it. So if we don't get this approved within a couple of weeks here, we've checked with the state and the feds, and we need this approved by no later than, I believe, the February 7th meeting was the date that this would have to be approved by, otherwise we would forfeit those funds and at least not do the project with these dollars.
And to follow up on that, and so we're clear, we do not, we can acknowledge we don't have a management analyst on staff today.
That's correct. That position's vacant right now.
So in an effort to move things forward, aside from that, so that people know, you used to be a management analyst for this city, is that right?
That's correct.
When did you serve in that capacity?
2012 until 2015.
Is it fair to say you're obviously familiar with the duties and obligations of that position?
Yes, that's fair.
Have you reviewed this contract, this deal, this resolution? Have you reviewed it?
I'm gonna give a long-winded answer here, just in the interest of transparency. So yes, yes, I have. What the ordinance that specifies the issue at hand that Councilmember DeLucy has referred to is that any proposed acquisition that exceeds $2 million or that's going to cost more than $500,000 and last longer than 12 months needs to be reviewed by the independent management analyst. And the nature of that is to make sure that city staff properly notified the project. So that means advertised and made every effort to generate interest in bidding on that project, that the bid process was adhered to and followed carefully, that the scoring, the review process, if you will, in this case, this was just an invitation to bid, so making sure that that process was handled correctly, and then that the contract, you know, doesn't contain any nefarious terms or things that might be disadvantaged to the city, if you will. So yes, I have reviewed it for all of that, but I do want to be clear for you and for the rest of the community that when that ordinance was passed, it was intended that a non-city staff member, somebody who reports directly to the council and had that independence, could do that and not have the fox guarding the hen house, if you will. So I will tell you that I can attest that I have done that, but I can also tell you that that doesn't fully meet the spirit of what has been requested by that ordinance, not required by that ordinance. So just, I want to be fair to you and the rest of the council in answering that.
I appreciate that. Let me ask you, because not to give up inside baseball, we had one round of applicants for the management analyst. I know this because Councilmember Huff and the mayor and I serve on that committee. We had one round, didn't have a candidate that we really liked. The job has been posted again, and we've just now received some submissions. But realistically, we're not going to have somebody hired and review this and stamp, sign a, you know, stamp of approval before our deadline runs out.
Yeah, I mean, you drive down any corridor in any town, and you see the banner flags out front suggesting now hiring, and we're struggling with the same issue here. So it's a challenge to generate applicants and qualified applicants for any position right now, and the city is no different. We're struggling in the same way.
So knowing that you're not technically independent, although you know the requirements of the job, you're surely city manager, it's your job to not put bad deals in front of us. Do you feel comfortable recommending this?
Yeah, I mean, that's, it's, yes, that's why this is on the agenda with the staff recommendation for approval because, you know, when I said this went through that scoring process at the regional level, there were criteria laid out, and the reason this project scored pretty close to the top is because of the safety issues inherent with this corridor. So if you've driven through there, you know that there are very narrow shoulders, there's not a lot of sidewalks, it's very dimly lit, there are a lot of blind curves and hills and all of that. So the traffic issues and the pedestrian safety issues warranted this project getting both funded and, you know, fully funded, other than the 20% that we're obligated to. Oftentimes, you'll see projects only partially funded, and you have to go back into the cycle. This one scored high enough because of the inherent traffic safety issue. So we have put this on with our recommendation of approval because it helps improve pedestrian and vehicular traffic safety in that corridor. We also believe it has followed the appropriate procurement processes and just feel it's in the best interest of the community to accept these federal dollars and move forward with the project. But I do, again, understand the conundrum that you find yourself in with the city ordinance.
No, I totally appreciate that. Bare bones, it's sidewalks and gutters or curbs on the north side of 40 Highway?
Bare bones, that's right. And then there will be some traffic control issues that we hope, as they're designed, will alleviate some of the traffic crashes and that kind of thing that we've seen in that area all too often.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mr. City Manager. Obviously, if other people have questions, but I, I'd like to see this get done some way if we can. I don't know how anybody else feels about it, but, and I don't know if there's another answer, hiring a consultant to do it on a rush job or something, but otherwise, unless we reach an agreement on alternate, I'd probably vote yes on it just because I'd like to see the improvement. So that's all I have.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, we did discuss at the council meeting very briefly the absence of our management analyst, which we've had a difficult time filling that position. And this is, I believe, the first circumstance we've had that has had this requirement since we've had that vacancy. I did discuss it. As you know, I scheduled an executive session to discuss this as a matter of personnel. It did not meet the Sunshine Law requirements, which is fine, but this is up for discussion at the study session about what to do in the interim on the city manager, management analyst position. We all recall during the budgetary process, having lengthy discussions about this position. The charter requires that it is a full-time position, we, that reports to the city council and is a full-time city employee. So we cannot use any outside agency or outside consultant to perform these management analyst duties. We cannot assign this to a current employee to add on to their current responsibilities. So I have not yet come up with a solution about how to temporarily fill this positions, which is why I suggested that we discuss it, the study session next week, and see if there are some options. But I feel like over the last several years, we've really thoroughly vetted all of our options on the management analyst, and the charter is one of the few things that I find the charter to be very clear on, is that it must be a full-time employee. So I don't, I mean, there's certainly no way that we're going to get that done by this deadline. This has been a project that we've worked on for many, many years to bring improvement to 40 Highway. We're very fortunate to be selected for this federal funding after several applications and awarded these federal funds. I feel we, I would be very remiss, not only as mayor, but as a former 4th District councilperson who worked on this and a resident of this area of town, and commitment that I've made to our neighbors here to bring improvements to our area of Independence, that we should not pass up this opportunity. I regret that our process is not ideal the way it should be. However, I feel confident that the review of it has been adequate. We have qualified for a great deal of federal funding, and if we pass on this, we're not going to get another opportunity for a very, very long time. I wish it were different, and I do feel a bit stuck between rock and a hard place, but we are, through this, we're in this resolution agreeing to waive the section of the safe purchasing policy, which is a policy that's not in the charter, that's in our policies. So it's not as restrictive as the charter. So I am eager to get this position filled, but I will be in support of this this evening.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I should have mentioned this a moment ago, but staff has reminded me that this did have a third-party review by Missouri Department of Transportation. So as part of those federal spending requirements, MoDOT had to review this to make sure we had followed the bidding process correctly and fairly and openly. So certainly not our management analyst and not, you know, what our ordinance specifically called for, but it did enjoy outside review by another party. I just wanted to mention that for your benefit as you deliberate.
I have a final question. Why can't we get it next year or the next year? Why are we assuming it's going to be several years?
That's a fair question. So the competitive process, and I'm going to just kind of make this simplified. There is an allocation of federal funds every year that comes to the Kansas City region, and we compete for those funds with every other municipality in the region through the Mid-America Regional Council. Now, each city has representation on this committee, and there's scoring that happens about each of those projects, things like safety enhancements and quality of life and lots of other things. This project was awarded to us, I think, four years ago. So they award these projects multiple years in advance. So, and this was one that ranked in the top five when, at the time, when it was awarded. So though we know that it's a project that's been viewed favorably by the region, if we forfeit at this time, we'd probably be looking at least another four to five years before, even if they awarded it in the next cycle. They're awarding these years in advance, so it would probably be sometime. So it doesn't prohibit us or preclude us from competing for it, but a lot of these dollars have already been programmed out multiple years, and it will be sometime before we actually get the check again to do the project.
Okay. Thank you.
Did you ever, I don't ever remember seeing that, what I was concerned, a couple weeks ago was on them rated. I don't, did you send that out, how these were rated?
The invitation. The invitation to bid results?
Yeah, I know, I know we just look at just price because it didn't get out there correctly. But just wondering when you did your analysis of this, if you rated them or?
So I'll have Adam go ahead and answer that for you.
So I, I sent a memo to the council last week and it's in the packet. We're prohibited by using a rating system. This is a straight bid project. That's the regulations with the federal money. So there's no rating that goes on here. Straight bid.
So it was all about price then and whether they were qualified?
Correct. And we received six bids. All six bids were deemed to be responsive bids.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor Protem. Mr. Walker, just refresh our memory. How long have we been without a city analyst?
How long have I been with the city?
How long have we been without one?
Oh, at, at least a year now.
A year?
Yeah, at least, at least a year now.
How many projects do we have in the pipeline that are two million plus?
Oh, I, I know you're going to have, you know, two to three every year at least from Power and Light. And then probably another one to two at least from municipal services, some sort of road or bridge project. So I would say every year, you're starting off on average looking at at least five.
So I understand everyone's perspective on we could do this without. But it's a check and balance for, for our city. And when it comes to money, I think it's appropriate to have those checks and balances. So I, I get nervous. It's a slippery slope when we start making excuses of why we can do this and why we should do this without following our policy. So I, I think that the, the checks and balances are important in our city for you in order to maintain budgets and to keep us moving forward and to do it with the level of transparency that we all talk about for our residents. So I'm not going to be able to support this without the city analyst.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. So throughout my tenure up here, there's always been gaps of one resigns or moves on, then we have to go through the process for whatever reason to hire, to, to go through. Because it is the council's hire, so it would be up to us to really put the gas on the fire to get this going. But we can only move as fast as the applicants. And we did reject some at the last round. So the effort's been put in and been made. But we've done this before. I can't remember the, the project off the top of my head, but it hasn't been that long ago that we approved other large bid contracts with this in here and I believe with this in council.
Yeah, there's, there have been instances, and I'm with you, Councilmember, I'm struggling to recall them off the top of my head, but where those have been waived. Predating me, I, I know from the time that my predecessor left to the time I was hired, there was a gap of two years between when there was a management analyst. I'm not certain how the council filled the gap in that window. If, if the prevailing priority tonight is still to make sure that we've had that management analyst review, given that we've got up until that February 7th hard deadline, I might ask if we could continue this item to that date to give us the opportunity to figure out if there is a acceptable solution for the council. I know there's still a lot of folks around who were there in that two-year window when we didn't have a management analyst, so we could figure out what was done at that time and see if there's some solutions the council might be willing to accept that would provide that level of review and then make the council feel comfortable considering it once the review's been completed.
And if I may, to follow up with that, these are very important contracts. These are very highly competitive bids which you have put in. But that doesn't even count the staff time to fulfill their obligation to make these applicants, applications as strong as can be to fight for that funding to come here. So that dollar amount's not even fixed into this, so for sure.
Correct.
Excuse me, I have a question. You said February some date. What do you think we could?
February 7 was the, if, so if, if we could have the item continue to that date, that would give us opportunity to do two things, to figure out how this situation has been handled in the past, particularly where there's been those extended gaps without a management analyst and present those solutions to the council and try to find one that would, would work for you. And then give us, assuming we do give the council that opportunity to have that review completed and brought to you before the final consideration on the 7th.
Mr. Protem, may I make a motion?
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, I move that we continue it to February 7.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
I would only throw in a request that can we get a very short, simple analysis of the policy?
Of, of the, the ordinance?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, uh huh.
Yeah, that requires the management analyst or recommends it or whatever it says.
I'll do two things for the council and the community's benefit. I will email that policy to the council by tomorrow morning and then I'll make sure that that, that is added to this item. So if anybody from the public wants to review it as well, they could.
So Mr. City Manager?
Yes.
We do have this on the study session agenda, so we can provide it at that time for discussion. So gives us ample time for questions.
All right, we had a motion that's been seconded. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
All right, that brings us to Councilman Stewart, number two.
I was just trying to find out where the funding was from, for this as well.
Yes, again, Councilmember Stewart and members of the council, this item is also a federal project. This is our matching percentage of that. These are street improvement sales tax dollars to fund the design contract.
So it's all coming from this city street sales tax or the federal government's covering some of it?
For this design portion of the project, correct. And then the construction contract will be, if approved by council, would be federal funds.
Okay, that's all I have. I'll move for approval on item number two.
Second.
The motion's been made and seconded. Any more discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Bill passes. That now brings us to our non-ordinance action items. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 21-836, a resolution lifting the state of emergency in Independence, Missouri.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I, I would like to move this to our next council meeting. I put in a call to the governor's office this morning and asked several questions that I'd like to bring back for the council's consideration. So I'd like to postpone this until the next council meeting, which is when?
January 18th.
So I move to postpone this to January 18th.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
No.
Resolution passes. Our bill, sorry. Number two, Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 22-702, a resolution directing the city manager to explore leave options for first responders related to COVID-19 absences.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Go ahead.
I, I definitely like the idea of this and I like the city manager taking a look at it. I, my idea was that we apply this to all city employees. There's a lot that, even where we're sitting today, municipal court folks that come in contact a lot. So I had, I'd like to make a motion to amend for all, all city employees.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
I'd like, just for consideration, if, if council member would accept maybe the language being frontline workers? All frontline workers, people that are dealing with, including IPL, corp workers, whoever has come in contact with the public.
I don't know of any employee that doesn't have contact with the public.
We have some. They're working from home.
Well, we, if I, Mayor Protem, if I may, we do have employees who are able to work from home. And we have some employees who clearly are not able to work from home. Since this item really just directs the city manager to do some investigation, I'm very happy to support looking at all positions across the organization to see what needs to be done and bring this back for a recommendation. But, you know, we're, we're currently, the city manager is currently encouraging those who can, are able to perform their full duties from home to take advantage of that option. That does not apply to first responders, of course. We know that. And others in our city, such as our street crews who are out working our streets during this weathered last few days. But if I understand this correctly, this is a resolution directing city manager to explore leave options. So I would be comfortable with looking at all positions and then having the city manager bring us recommendations based on their contact with the public.
So are you asking to amend this resolution?
No, we're just-
Just the original motion.
The original motion, I think, is sufficient.
To amend to all employees?
To all employees.
To all employees, not first responders?
Motion's seconded.
Yes.
So the, the main thing with this was, in the beginning, was that I know that our firemen and our police have been getting a lot more exposure than the rest. And so that's why we come up with this in the beginning. And then, of course, now we're hearing from some of the other, the IBW and stuff, for the linemen and stuff, they're all in the same truck. So presented quite a problem in these guys, especially the guys with the 24-hour shifts and the 12s using a lot of their own time, just doing their job. And so that's what this was brought about. But, so we have a motion seconded on the floor, so is there any discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm so dumb. Was the motion to amend already done and we've seconded it to take out the words "first responder" to the words "all employees"?
All employees, yes.
Okay, so that's what we're talking about.
Yes. Mr. Mayor Protem, just, just one more thing. Mr. Walker, when we refer to all employees, up to this point, have all employees been treated the same way as, as like the first responders in terms of if they've been in contact with someone COVID-related? Were they giving up personal days, sick days, those kind of things? Or was it just pretty much our first responders who were, who were paying that price?
Our all employees originally with the federal reimbursement guidelines, we were able to track those for, for reimbursement for, for sick days used. We don't have that privilege now. All of our employees are allowed at this point to run a negative sick leave balance so that they don't have to take unpaid leave related to COVID. So whether they are caring for themselves or a family member, they are allowed to do that. I will tell you that, other than those items, yes, everybody has had equal application across the table.
And that's what, if we're going to do all employees, then we need to look at what fires given up, police has given up, city employees given up, has it been equal and fair? And I'd also encourage you to maybe look at neighboring cities and see how they have. It's my understanding that in Kansas City, they have 80 hours just given as COVID hours that they can use and it's banked every year, doesn't go against sick or, or leave. So I'd like to, I'd like for you to explore those options and, and see what that would also cost us. And also what it would cost us to return those hours and sick days back, if, if we can, too, please.
Yeah, we will do a comprehensive analysis of those cities and then costs associated with some of those items as well.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Can we get the answer in a study session so we can look at it?
Yes.
I don't want to push, push it.
Mr. Mayor Protem?
Yes.
Mr. City Manager, you had a lot thrown at your, your plate right here. What's, what's a realistic timeframe that we can probably start seeing some results of your study here? Because I'm talking to the local 71 union president last week. The, the sticking points aren't going to go away anytime soon and they'll probably get worse. Any kind of guess of it's on, on what your timeframe may look like?
I feel comfortable that we would have this no later than 30 days, perhaps sooner.
It's pretty aggressive. Okay. Anything else? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Bill passes.
That's, sorry, that's on the motion. We need an approval for 22-702.
172, awesome.
We have to make a motion to approve it.
Mr. Mayor Protem, sorry, one more thing. I just want to make sure I get the record corrected. To Councilmember Steinmeier's point, there was one differentiation. Previously, the governor of the state of Missouri had identified first responders as being able to have a presumption of contracting COVID in the workplace. That rule, that was done by administrative rule by the governor, that has expired, which has exacerbated the issue that's in front of us right now.
When did that happen, Mr. Walker?
When did that expire?
Yeah, like, was it August or something?
It was, yeah, sometime towards the tail end of '21.
So specifically, I want to know what those hours and days
Yeah, yeah, well, match that up with, with that as part of the analysis. But I wanted to make sure I fairly answered your question, that there was one differentiation between those employees and the rest of the city workforce.
And I apologize for not making it more clear, but I'm glad that you caught it. So, thank you.
Okay, we did have a motion and seconded on the actual thing.
Okay, yep, so, any more discussion? Madam City Clerk.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Item passes. It brings us to our ordinances, second readings. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 21-087, an ordinance admitting Chapter 12, offenses and penalties of the Independence City Code and adding Article 9, offenses and penalties of shopping carts. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
No.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
That brings it, bill passes.
Bill number 21-088, an ordinance authorizing an agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for the Public Transit Operating Assistance Grant in the amount of $16,504 for operating expenses associated with transit service for the period of July 1, 2021, through June 30, 2022, and making the necessary appropriations. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Bill passes. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 21-089, an ordinance funding determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring temporary construction and grading easements and general utility easements for the West Jones Road Culvert Replacement Project, project number 70131802, authorizing the negotiation and imminent domain proceedings if necessary, approving the plans and specifications for the project, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second and final reading.
Any discussion on this bill?
Mr. Protem?
Yes, sir.
Just want to say I'm glad we're moving forward on this and getting this project done and going.
Certainly.
Anything else? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmembers Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Bill passes. Madam City Clerk.
Bill number 21-09- Bill number 21-090, an ordinance terminating tax increment financing within the Mount Washington redevelopment area, dissolving the special allocation fund accounts related thereto, and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Second and final reading.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Huff?
Yes.
Perkins?
Yes.
Stewart?
Yes.
DeLucy?
Yes.
Steinmeier?
Yes.
Hobart?
Yes.
Mayor Weir?
Yes.
Bill passes. It brings us to our first readings.
Bill number 22-001, an ordinance authorizing final disposition of certain city records that met all requirements to be eligible for such disposition. Bill number 22-002, an ordinance approving especially his permit to operate a used car lot at 9300 East US 40 Highway in Independence, Missouri. Bill number 22-003, an ordinance approving a rezoning from District I-1 Industrial, District C-2 General Commercial for 11445 East Truman Road in Independence, Missouri. Bill number 22-004, an ordinance declaring the need to acquire real property for the amelioration of conditions which constitute blight in the city by negotiation, or if necessary, by condemnation, and authorizing the city manager to obtain and execute all instruments necessary for acquisition of such land. Bill number 22-005, an ordinance vacating an existing platted sanitary sewer easement of all part of the Eastlands Center first plat on and across Outlet 2 of the platted 40-foot wide utility easement and containing 3,016.79 square feet, more or less a subdivision in Independence Jackson County, Missouri.
All right, that will bring us to Councilman comments. Start with Councilman Perkins.
Nothing tonight.
Councilman Person DeLucy?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilman Steinmeier?
Just want to say Happy New Year to everybody in Independence. Hope that 2022 is a better year for some of you or all of you than 2021. Looking forward to greater things this year.
Councilperson, Mayor, Hobart?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Briefly, Mr. Walker, you know, and I've mentioned it publicly a little bit lately, that I get, I'm sensitive to, to mental health issues. And not only do the holidays tend to exacerbate those issues for people, but on top of that, our first responders have really experienced that personally over the last handful of months. I would, I would ask, and ask the mayor as well, if we could have a study session, I'd like to, the, the counselor that spoke at the firefighter's funeral at the Truman Memorial Building seemed to have, he was very entertaining, and he seemed to really have a handle on PTSD-related issues. And maybe we could get Ms. Heinon to update us on what the city's doing, and, and maybe get Julie Pratt from Comprehensive Mental Health. I'd, I'd just like to, I don't want to, you know, make this a huge thing, but, but, but once would be nice where folks, people in the city, employees, anybody, we could provide some resources and sort of discuss the issues. Coming out of COVID, you know, it's not just first responders, it's really everybody. And I, I just, I'd make that request. I'd like to have a, a study session on that, maybe sooner rather than later, maybe end of the month or something if we could, while we're still in winter, while it's still dark out, while everybody's still just trying to get through this.
Would be glad to do so. I think we have been starting some things as staff that are pretty exciting that we could share with you. And then, as you mentioned, some of the external-facing community things. I know I promised Mr. Fairbank at Mr. Sappenfield's funeral, and also promised Mr. Peterson after some of our tragedies in the police department this year, that we wouldn't let any of those events go in vain, and certainly look to take care of our staff, both in public safety and citywide. And so I think it's important to update the council on that, and also the community as to what we're doing to respond to their neighbors in need.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Stewart?
I have nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, thank you.
Mayor Weir?
Thank you very much. I do have a few things. First of all, I want to wish everybody a very Happy New Year, and we are hoping for a very pleasant, optimistic, healing, healthy 2022, which we all are longing for, I know. We did have a mental health, a second mental health town hall meeting scheduled right before Christmas, between Thanksgiving and Christmas, which we thought was a very important time, to the Councilman Hobart's point, that our health department had organized. We ended up canceling that event because it was scheduled for the night that we were expecting very severe weather with the high winds that were coming through the area. So we thought, in the interest of the public's safety, and frankly, to ensure good attendance, we canceled that event. But that is going to be rescheduled, and I hope that's going to be done very soon, not only for us to have these updates that we'd like to hear and continue to discuss, but also an opportunity for the public to come and be educated and, and share thoughts as well. So I appreciate you continuing, Councilman Hobart, to be interested in that topic. I feel somewhat compelled to respond to the speaker's remarks earlier, just because I want it to be clear in the public record. There have been numerous things that have been speculated about various developments going on around town that I or other members of the council or our city staff are directly involved with. I can assure you that I have had no discussions with anybody outside of what I have shared in council meetings and individually in meetings with the council members and the city manager regarding the Kmart site. So I have no idea what this whistleblower, who it may be, or what it might involve, but I can confirm that I have not, the city manager, and I have not met individually with any developer outside of a meeting that was arranged by the Economic Development Corporation, which I shared that information, information with each of the council members that I was able to meet with. And there was a reference to a former Kansas City city manager who I have never had any discussion with any former Kansas City city manager regarding the development of the Kmart site. So before that receives any more speculation, I just want to go on the record as saying that those have, meetings have not occurred. Finally, my family and I enjoyed a few days away over the holidays. So in the interest of caution, I'm going to stay home for a few days to make sure that everybody is healthy and my kids can get back to school. We are all being tested, which I will tell you is no small feat these days. I want our community to know that we are in a serious deficit in available COVID tests. So I know a lot of people are seeking them because, for the same reasons that they've been traveling or they're required by their employer or their school to be tested before they come back, and they are very, very hard to come by. So I'll just take this opportunity to continue to encourage people to take precautions, try to be as safe as possible. I know we all enjoyed spending time with friends and family over the holidays, I did as well. So we'll be continuing to try to access those resources at the best of our ability through the state, primarily for our city employees, so that we can ensure that they're, they are safe. There are some testing events going on around the community. There will be one at Kaufman Stadium beginning, I believe, tomorrow. And I don't have the details of those are rapid tests, or if those are going to take a few days. But there's a very high demand for tests and a very low supply. So I hope everybody continues to stay safe and healthy as we move into the new year and this colder weather. So that's all I have, Mayor Pro Tim.
Thank you. I have, bringing that on this testing, looking into some things here. And there's a piece of equipment out there, Mr. City Manager, called a Gen Expert. And Lee Summitt's using it. It does four tests, runs about $20,000. What they do over there is it's offered to all city employees, so there's not a waiting line. The result's 97.7 accurate, 30 to 45 minutes you get a result. And in Lee Summitt, they have it at like their fire station number one, and all the employees are allowed to go there. And they've, actually, it's worked out so well for them, and they're saving so much money, because these tests are expensive to our insurance company, that they've opened it up to immediate family also. So there's a chance, maybe, they could look at something like that, maybe, maybe shorten these lines up, especially for our city people.
Yeah, we'd be glad to make our contact with our neighbors down there and see what they got.
Do you have anything this evening?
Just very quickly, want to mention, I was amused over the weekend by one of our peer cities that was practically tearing their rotator cuff to congratulate themselves on their winter snow operation. I'd like to think here in Independence, we're a little more humble, but I do want to thank our crews who were out doing snow removal this weekend, as well as our public safety personnel, our, our linemen, our water employees, our sewer employees, all of our frontline staff who were out working in those adverse conditions to keep the city moving and, and do it because it's the right thing and they care about the city. So want to thank all of them for that, and looking forward to working with all of you in the new year ahead to implement your goals and policies. Thank you.
Is there anything else? Meeting adjourned.